Good evening. Fall River Community Media, FRC Media, along with our online community news resource, FRC Media News, are pleased to sponsor tonight's forum featuring the candidates running for Fall River City Council. My name is Keith Tebow. I'm the director of FRC Media, and I'll be serving as the moderator for tonight's event. We are holding two city council forums tonight. The second forum will be held later on this evening at 8:00 PM. All candidates were invited to participate and make up our two panels, and the makeup was determined by a drawing. The candidates joining us in our first panel are, in alphabetical order, David Cowan, Daniel Dupere, Pam Libberty-Laboe, Cliff Ponte, Jordan James Sylvia, Mark Tippettot, Ian Tompkins, and Derek Viveras. Thank you for joining us tonight. Also joining us tonight is a panel of journalists who will be asking the questions to our candidates. They are Donna Mata, editor-in-chief of FRC Media News, Michael Holtzman, reporter for the Herald News, and Pam Martin of Fall River Government Television. Thank you for joining us tonight. The format of tonight's forum is as follows. Our forum will last 90 minutes. There will be no opening statements, but each candidate will be allowed a 90-second closing statement. Each candidate will answer every question posed by our panelists, and will have 90 seconds to answer each question. There will be no rebuttals. Prior to each question, we will randomly draw a candidate's name, and that candidate will respond to the question first. We will then work around the table so that each candidate has an opportunity to answer the question. Candidates will only be asked to answer a question first once. In the event that all candidates are not selected to answer a question first, there will be another drawing from those remaining to select the candidate who will offer his or her closing statement first. We are ready to get started. Our first question will come from Donna Mata from FRC Media News, and will be answered first by Ian Tompkins. Donna?
The combined sewer overflow project has been ongoing for decades and is very costly to the city. Obviously, it's a federally mandated project. A ballot question will be asked to the voters to actually say yes or no to a loan order of $123 million. As a city councillor, what is your stance on that, considering that, according to the community administrator for community utilities, Terry Sullivan, it would probably be about $200 per household per year in taxes?
Mr. Tompkins?
Unfortunately, it's a federally mandated project, so we need to do it. I believe that getting the project done is our top priority. I think it's unfair that we have a federally mandated project that they didn't fund. Unfunded mandates aren't a good thing. They put a tax strain on our poor community, and it's not fair, but we have to deal with it, and we have to get it done.
Thank you. Mr. Viveras?
So, if we look back at our sewer system, there was a time where we were dumping our sewerage into the bay, and we've seen some progress, and now we have a sewage treatment system that's been running now for some time, and it's constantly running, and the state has come down and mandated us to make these repairs. It is unfortunate that there'll be another increase due to water in sewer, but I think in order for the city to meet that, meet this law, we should be, we should respond to it and take care of it. My understanding is that if we don't, the expenses are going to be even higher for the city. So, I think either we have two options. We have one, we do what the state is asking, or we put up a fight with the state and see and take our chances. But I think the responsible thing to do is, would be to repair this.
Thank you. Mr. Cowan?
Yes. We sell water and sewer to different communities. We should stop raising their rates instead of the taxpayers paying more and more. We have a $40 thing. At first, it was 25 for the overflow and all this. Now it's 40 that was supposedly going to be taken off the ballot, off the bill. So, it's, how do you expect? Then they want to raise taxes, 2.5%. And we're selling water to different communities. Why don't they get the price when they redo the contract? They know that we have a water and sewer bill. We're selling more water and sewer now to Tivodin. I know when I built my house, I'm right on the Tivodin line. For me to tie into the sewer line that comes from me to you, they charge you $6,000 a year. It was $5,800. Why don't we put the bill to the communities like Westport or Tivodin, Freetown? We're selling them water and sewerage. Why should the taxpayers of Fall River keep on getting more and more taxes, even though it's mandated? When we do a contract with different communities, we should add more money, charge them more. Because I had a, they had a tea where I built my house from Fall River. 300 feet, I had to bring the sewer line, so I went and paid $5,800, and you can look it up. And Fall River says that wasn't right. So, they're making money off us, Tivodin and everybody else.
Thank you. Mr. Dupere?
I had the pleasure of touring the wastewater treatment plant two weeks ago with Terry Sullivan, and it is very dilapidated. It is in much need of upgrade, and we spoke a lot about it. And if we don't vote yes on number two, what's going to happen is, is that eventually the state could come in and take over the plant, and then we would end up with possibly much higher rates. And that's just, they want to put in a nitrogen removal plant as well, that Mr. Sullivan's been holding him off for quite a while on. So, the EPA is really breathing down his neck, and I think if we do put this through, this will hold him off a little bit longer for that additional multimillion-dollar project that would have to, they could eventually mandate. And instead of 123 million on this ballot, it was somewhere around 303 million altogether with the nitrogen plant as well. But there are some safety issues that need to be corrected, along with, again, the facility itself is desperate in need of upgrade.
Thank you. Ms. Libberty-Laboe?
Thank you. So, the origin of this, how we've ended up here, is because the city originally did not comply. So, we have a federal mandate. If Mr. Sullivan has been in front of the council several times, he has explained to us, and hopefully to the residents, and I hope that they will understand by reading the ballot question, that if we, if we vote no, which everyone has the right to do, in the end, it could end up, it could end up costing the city, the residents of the city a lot more money than it will if they voted yes for this. We put ourselves in the position of an unknown. The city could come in, I'm sorry, the state feds could come in and change what they're asking for, what they'd like us to do, if we do not continue to follow the process that was laid out for us. So, that is a chance the residents are going to have to decide if they are willing to take, and we'll have to see what happens on election day with that.
Thank you. Mr. Ponte?
Thank you, and it's a great question, and it's pretty clear that we know what the effects would be on our infrastructure if this doesn't happen. But the bigger conversation we need to start having, short-term and long-term, I believe, is it really comes down to budgeting. It comes down to, as city councillors, as city council candidates, protecting the taxpayers. Is the increase inevitable, unfortunately? If it passes, yes, it is. But what we really need to start doing as city councillors, which I believe we've done, is start reducing the burden on the taxpayers. How do we do that? Well, it's, it's pretty simple. Once we start building our budgets around public safety, education, economic development, and the needs of the taxpayers, and stop expanding government in areas that are not essential, I think that will make a big difference in reducing the burden on the taxpayers. I also strongly believe that in order to avoid these kind of situations in the future, the city really needs to come up with a coherent debt management plan. That debt management plan would, in my opinion, be something that would be a long-term debt plan, that we would be able to help leverage and improve our capital and infrastructure needs. But great question. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sylvia?
Thank you, Keith. So, first off, the premise that it's a mandate and by the federal government, so we're all, everyone in Fall River is just has to roll over and figure out how they're going to pay for it. I don't believe in any, these people are just, so this is coming from the EPA and the federal government. We just had a new, a new administration come in in the White House, who supposedly, you know, has people's backs against, you know, EPA encroachments and whatnot. So, to think that, you know, the city just has to have all these poor people in Fall River, poorest city in Massachusetts, is going to fork over $123 million. I heard, I believe, a few months ago, I heard Terry Sullivan on WSAR mention a $1 billion number. He said this was just one project, there were several other things in the pipe. So, and I, and I was driving my car, and I laughed, I busted out laughing to think that the city of Fall River is just going to fork over $1 billion for some water. And the gentleman runs the water department, so I imagine, you know, he's going to say what he thinks the city needs. But I don't think that's reasonable, feasible. So, the answer is, you know, we have a federal delegation. I know this happened with the CSO originally with Elizabeth Warren. I know the mayor went down to DC and spoke to different people. I just reject that the city just has to go ahead and pay this. So, I'd have to see, I'd have to see some sort of, just another, another issue too in the economy, I'd like to see Elizabeth Warren, Ed Markey, our congressman, come down.
Thank you. Mr. Tippettot?
Well, I actually agree on paying this. I think we should vote yes. Mr. Sullivan does an awful lot of work to come up with these things, and believe me, he doesn't like spending money. I was here when the original CSO tunnels were dug, and we got whacked, big dollars, I think at the time, 130-some million dollars, when we could have had it done for 90-some million if we'd have gone along with it, when we would totally go along with it. Fighting the federal government seems to be, you never win. So, why are we investing in a fight of paying lawyers and so on and so forth? It's been mandated by the EPA. It says it's got to be done. I think we ought to start thinking about how to fund it and get this project off and running.
Very good. Thank you. Our next question will be asked by Michael Holtzman of the Herald News, and the question will be answered first by Pam Libberty-Laboe. Michael?
I spoke recently with two veteran city councils with about 30 years of council experience between them. Their approaches to serving on the city council included using common sense, making and evaluating short-term plans, and staying within a city councillor's jurisdiction, and not trying to be the mayor. What's your approach?
Ms. Libberty-Laboe?
So, I don't know who those two city councillors were, but I often say something that the judge says at our meetings. I choose to stay in my lane. We have a role as a city council. I'm not sure that everybody knows exactly what that role is. It's essentially the administration, the mayor proposals, and the council either approves or disposes. Some councillors will do additional work outside of that with new initiatives. I've done that. Several others have, and I agree with that. But what it boils down to is, we need to look at what the administration puts in front of us and decide if it's in the best interest of the city. On top of that, I think that we've lost some, I don't want to say the word decorum, because I think it's overused, but I think we've lost politeness and respect for people that come down at the table, for our fellow colleagues on the council. I think that needs to go back to, to a level of respect. It's, I'm not feeling, I'm a current councillor, and the tension in the council chambers, you can feel it. I don't partake in it. I would never disrespect my fellow colleagues like that, or anybody that was down at the table, but I agree with the not overstepping our bounds as councillors. We are councillors, and there is an administration.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Ponte?
Thank you. It's a great question, and again, we're in a situation here in Fall River where it's oftentimes that there's always this disconnect between the city council and the administration. At the end of the day, as one city councillor and as a body of nine, I think we all need to sit back and remember what we were all elected to do. We were all elected to represent the city of Fall River, you, the taxpayers, and in your best interest. So, there's always going to be moments and times where we're going to agree to disagree. I've always tried my very best as a city councillor to hold that level of respect and professionalism when asking my questions. I know sometimes, you know, you have to ruffle some feathers in order to get things done around city government, but I think if we all remember what we were elected to do, who we represent, and understand that there's going to be moments and times between the city council and members of the administration where we are going to disagree. That is a reality. But I think it's healthy. I think it's good dialogue, and I think that as long as we all have the collective passion with what our positions are, I believe the city of Fall River will all continue to benefit from that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sylvia?
Sure. So, I agree with Mr. Ponte about, obviously, people are going to disagree over time, but when I watch these meetings, and I hear this from every person, I agree with what Ms. Libberty-Laboe just said. There is a lot of, decorum has been, the word has been used for years now, but there's a lot of misbehaving by people, elected people, the people on the city council now. Also, it's not, the respect isn't about how you talk and, you know, how you present yourself. It's also every, all these discussions that they have and these disagreements, if they were honest disagreements about policy and what's better for the city of Fall River, people, different groups, whatever, that'd be one thing. A lot of times, it's these political factions that have developed on the city council. It's always been that way. Once there's a new election, you know, they all basically circle the wagon to find out who's going to support who. Has nothing to do with the actual issues being debated at the time. It has to do with who's going to help who. So, that, as far as, as far as the disagreements, it's not like it's honest disagreements. It's all political. Anyone can see that from watching at home. As far as staying in your lane, I think the city council punts on so many things, on labor union contracts. You don't just sit there and wait for the, for the administration to put something in front of you. That is not your job as a city councillor. You're a legislative body for the city of Fall River. It's up to you to initiate things you want to see taken care of. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Tippettot?
I agree with Pam, and I disagree with her. Actually, I disagree with a little bit of this. You know, I think, I go way back, maybe I'm an old timer, but when council meetings used to take an hour, an hour and a half, was it because those councillors didn't care about what's going on back then? No. No. They didn't have to, why do we have to hear the same thing from councillor, one, two, three, four, and all the way down the line? Everybody jumps on a bandwagon and has something to say. They actually get very repetitious. And when you watch the meeting, maybe it's being on the other side, and sometimes it never ceases to amaze me. Why are they repeating themselves? Why don't you just say, look, I agree with Pam? You know, why don't you just say that? Instead of, well, you know, I kind of like what I heard, but I got to add, but they don't add anything. They just add that...
Yes, Michael. Hold on. Leave the mic back. Okay, go ahead, Michael.
Just encourage you to state what your approach is also.
My approach to voting on the council? I'd like to, I'm representing the people. I'm representing different organizations there, you know, the seniors, the this, the that. And I'm a big public safety individual, and I will do all I can to continue helping public safety and the schools, too. My children graduated from those schools. So, my votes will definitely be with those items.
Thank you. Mr. Tompkins?
Okay. So, in regards to the role of a city councillor being short-term a focus, I think that's the problem with our current city charter. Under the current city charter, the role of the city councillor is limited, and they are supposed to think short-term and dispose of what the mayor presents before them. I think that's part of the problem in Fall River, and that's why I want to see major charter changes to give the council drastically more power and rearrange our electoral system so that we get better candidates running for office. Under the current system, we have people that run, they get there, and all they can do is, very limited, it's not executive, it's very legislative, and they can only deal with what the mayor presents before them, and it leads to a lot of short-term decisions. We're seeing a lot of short-term decisions, not only in Fall River, but in our economy as a whole. We see CEOs continuously getting, experiencing problems because of their shortsightedness, and that's why we are currently experiencing a financialized economy. And I want to try to change that so that we have a much broader reach in the city council, and we can focus on long-term goals.
Thank you. Mr. Viveras?
So, first and foremost, the role is to represent the residents in the city of Fall River. Two motivations for me to run this time around is, I felt that there was a need to bring collaborative leadership, people working together genuinely in the best interests of the city and the people of Fall River. The other motivation was a need for much more positive representation of the residents. And that's not pointing fingers at anybody. That's just something that, an observation that I've had, a lot of people have had, and something I feel that I could bring to the city, and it's a important role for a, someone in elected office. To a point that one of the candidates made, I believe part of our role is be prepared. And when we head to a city council meeting, I think a lot of the questions that are being asked can be asked ahead of time. Not all of them, but I think there's a lot of information that we can go into the meeting knowing and understanding prior to sitting there, and could certainly shorten the length of time. Everybody's in the chambers. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cowan?
I think we have to work as a team, because we're, we're working for the tax, the citizens of Fall River. People go in, they have their own issues. Everybody has to work as one. You might disagree with one person, but you all have your own opinions. When it comes down to the last state, it's the taxpayers of Fall River. So, everyone should be involved. The mayor, the whole, every, every person. Like, when they're having different views, like, yessi, they were arguing about purple The mayor should have came down, and it should have been, everyone should have been involved. Instead of badmouthing this person, oh, you had this and that, work as a team. Everybody should be building bridges. Like, when we were in the service, we all went out as one. When you had a team, like a fire team or whatever, if one strayed, everybody has to work as one, because we're working for the taxpayers of the city of Fall River. If one has an agreement, oh, we should raise taxes, the other one says no, work as a team and discuss it. You don't have to sit and argue with one another, or table it for the next meeting or, so we all, then, don't argue with the person, thing. When you leave, you should be able to talk to the person, or like, one-on-one, like a friend. If you, like, a lot of people nowadays, they say, oh, I don't like this...
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Dupere?
I think it's important that the people that sit on the council need to remember and never lose sight that they work for the taxpayers, and we need to speak on their behalf. People go to the meetings, they're up in the audience, they speak volumes what their wants, needs, and concerns are, and as a councillor, you need to listen to what the majority wants. And as far as, you know, what goes on with the administration, it does seem to be some animosity, and I just feel that, you know, the administration needs to be treated with respect, and the administration needs to understand that if they want to, they want to go one way with an issue, and the council goes another way with it, it's because it's what the people want. And it shouldn't be because of personal vendetta or whatever it may be. It should just be, it's what the people want, and that's our job to work for the people.
Thank you. Pam Martin from Fall River Government Television has our next question, and this question will be directed first to Derek Viveras.
Good evening. My question has to do with panhandling. Some cities, to our West Cranston and Providence, may outlaw panhandling. In fact, violators would be fined. This would include schoolchildren and sports groups who are out filling the cans with coins. Panhandlers can be spotted at all of our city entrances. Are you in favor of a legal ban for Fall River, or is it the constitutional right of people to be able to panhandle?
Sure. So, one of the, one of the questions that came up to me very early on in my candidacy was the image that panhandling presents on the city of Fall River. So, I believe that we should, we should work, work and look at ways to regulate panhandlers if there's a permit or certain areas of the city that individuals can obtain in order to solicit funds, even if it's for a little league or a school or things of that nature. But you look at what some other cities have done to try and combat the panhandling issue and banning it and putting, putting boxes to donate to certain organizations. And so, I think there are ways to work around it and still help people who are in need. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cowan?
I'm against people coming up to the seniors and saying, oh, you have change, and it's getting ridiculous. You can't even stop at a stop sign, or they're on every corner. When it comes to charities for the kids, I'm 100% for it, because that's, we always done that. But when you have, you can't even, senior citizen goes shopping, somebody's already grabbing their arm or their pocketbook looking for change. They should stop that, because there's a lot of programs out there. If they, if they need food, or they need something, if you offer them food, they'll tell you right off, oh, I don't want to go work for you. I make more on the corner. There was one a while back, Burger King, my wife gave money. I said, why'd you give money? I says, he's driving a brand-new F-150, they're trading off. Oh, oh, no, they're needy. I says, you see it right there. We sat there, and she couldn't believe her eyes. She said, somebody should call the police. Why should a senior citizen go to a supermarket or something and be harassed and scared to leave their house? It's ridiculous. I think there should be a law. No one should go up. If you want to do something, we have a lot of stuff, they can go work. We have a lot of programs out there. There's the soup kitchens, they can, if they're really hungry, there's a lot of programs out there for everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Dupere?
I had stated that this would be one of my first resolutions, is to put a license on anybody who collects for, I mean, not just for people who sell flashlights and balloons in the parade, just anybody that collects money on a street corner, goes door-to-door collecting for charities, because there is certain fraud, and there's addictions that are fueled by, you know, some people collecting money. And I just feel that there's a lot of city services, so it would kind of serve as two different things. You'd have an identification of the person that's approaching you, collecting money, is they would have a badge, whatever it may be, however the city wanted to work it out. And they would also, by doing this, going down to the city hall to register, the city would know who's in the community that's collecting money from people, and they could also, the needy people, maybe waive the fee, give them the badge, and then they could offer them services that some people just don't know about, because there are a lot of services offered by the city that people don't know about. So, it would serve as, you know, dual purpose, to obtain a license to do this.
Thank you. Ms. Libberty-Laboe?
Thank you. I'm actually really glad that you asked this question. I've done some research on this lately. What I found is that there are several communities in Massachusetts that put ordinances in place to find panhandlers, and the ACLU has fought those communities. They have done it under freedom of speech, and they've won. So, for Fall River to put an ordinance in place of any type that said we would prohibit panhandling, we're going to end up in a lawsuit by the ACLU. What Rhode Island is now doing is they are putting an ordinance, different cities in Rhode Island, Cranston being one of them, they're putting ordinances and laws in place to now switch that to ticket a driver that stops to give money to the panhandlers. And that hasn't played out in court yet, that I know of. I've been looking at this for the last, just the last couple of months, to see what Fall River can do about this issue, because nobody wants to, you know, pull up to, off a highway exit and have someone at your window. If you're alone in the car, you don't want it. If you're out in the parking lot, you don't want it. But unfortunately, right now, the ACLU is fighting the communities that are doing this, and they are winning these lawsuits. As far as children's organizations and sports organizations, if they want to do something like this, then I would... like this, then I would certainly, you know, I think they should be permitted, the city should know when it's happening, who's doing it, and, you know, give them the ability to do that. But for us right now, for panhandlers, there's not a lot our community can do. We can watch and see what happens with ticketing the drivers and decide if that's the approach we want to take.
Thank you. Mr. Ponti.
Well, it's a great question. I've heard a couple of things tonight. You can go two different ways with this. There's a component to it that's illegal, that people are doing things, like another candidate indicated, there's illegal activities getting involved with panhandling. And then there's another part of it where it comes to the homeless aspect of panhandling. And I think as elected officials, what we really need to do is support those who are in need the most. I don't think outlawing panhandling is something that we're going to be able to do. I know New Bedford tried it at some point last year or the year before, and I believe it was held with some opposition. But let's not forget, you know, most people, some people who are in fact panhandling are those who are in need. And I think as a community, we need to continue to offer the services that we do as a community to those who are homeless, those who do need help, and do a better job as a community with supporting that. If there's illegal activities getting involved with panhandling, I would encourage, obviously, people to contact their police department, our local police department. And if there is in fact illegal things going on with panhandling, we can confer with our chief and our great police department. But we need to do a better job of supporting and getting behind those who are homeless. And I think once we do that as a community, I think we'll be better off altogether. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sylvia.
Whenever I hear panhandling raised as an issue, I always jokingly refer to politicians two months out before elections that basically professional panhandling where the whole thing's organized, regulated, maybe that's what, I think I've heard people call for that here tonight, licensing and badging. I could, I think there already is a license requirement for like a child to have a lemonade stand in the city of Fall River, which is absurd. And then they have that one day a year where they try to like promote entrepreneurism, which is kind of funny in itself too because it's like, oh yeah, isn't this so great? By the way, you can never do this for the other 364 days of the year. I think this is definitely not an issue. Whether people, you know, feel uncomfortable pulling up on this, on one of the on-ramps, off-ramps, whatever, and people asking for money, that's definitely not somewhere where the government should be going in and asking people addiction problems and homeless people to go to the city hall and get registered. It's just nonsensical to me. If people, I always put this on society, if people aren't giving them money, they're not, you know, if there's no, if there's no supply, they're not going to be out there asking for it. So it's on people. And people have big hearts and they give money to people. I don't do it personally, but if, as long as people are going to, people are going to stand out there. But as far as lawsuits, yeah, if you do try to create any sort of end the rounds and the laws, it is a constitutionally protected activity to solicit funds. Like I said, the politicians know about it, certain city groups do it.
Thank you.
It's just shouldn't be discriminated against.
Thank you. Mr. Tibbetto.
Well, I guess you can do it if you have a permit. And that's the whole thing here, isn't it? Is whether you have to get a permit to do this. And another thing, on highways, I see it all the time. I used to go to Cambridge quite a bit out there to see someone. And whenever I went out there, there was always somebody walking out into the middle of traffic off the highway to get into the Mass Avenue. And he's shaking his can. And that's, that's not a place to be, especially with old drivers, not that I'm one. But with old drivers, they don't, you know, they're scared, they don't know whether to move or not move. It's just, streets absolutely no. Sidewalks only I would go for and permits. Now you talk sidewalks, again, I antiquated here, I'm old. When I did Little League as a child, we had to stand inside First National, this predates most of you, and hold a can. You cannot walk around the parking lot. You can stand outside the door or inside the door. And that's it. If you want to sell chances, you only could do your neighborhood and you cannot walk in streets. I think this is something that we ought to look at, to protect people, even those that are panhandling. They need protection too. They shouldn't be running out in the road trying to do this. I mean, I feel for them, but there's got to be other avenues that they can get food.
Thank you. Mr. Tompkins.
Okay. So you mentioned that a few cities in Rhode Island that were banning panhandling. And as Pam mentioned, there's mass general law that prevents us from banning panhandling in Massachusetts. So while I've looked at some data and a lot of panhandlers are not truly needy in any way, some of them do need social services and some of them are just not doing work and getting paid and avoiding taxes. So I would love to ban panhandling, but it's not something we can do on the city level.
Thank you. Our next question will be asked by Donna Maja of FRC Media News. And it will be answered first by Daniel Dupere. Donna.
The second question on the ballot has to do with voting to approve a new home rule city charter. And the commission that was formed was over two years ago by Mike Mayo, who's a former city councillor. He's been putting out a lot of information out there about this document which governs city business. As a city councillor, do you support changing the home rule charter, which does, for example, take away the health insurance benefits for city councillors, among other aspects, of course?
Well, first and foremost, I can tell you that I have my own health insurance, so I don't need the health insurance. I will, I will waive that if that, I would tend to assume that that's possible because I don't need it. As far as the charter is concerned, I do have a lot of concerns about it. I know, I know something is in need, but by briefly reviewing the charter, I really can't support it. I just, I look at, in the very beginning, how they say that if you, for instance, are a firefighter, you can't serve on the school committee. I mean, and it's a non-compensated position. If you have a firefighter that is perfectly capable of doing the job, why are you going to tell him that he can't do that? And another thing that really troubled me about it was on Facebook, you had one of the charter commission members saying, vote no, vote no, vote no, and all these reasons why to vote no. So it does give me great reservation and I'm going to be honest with you, I am going to vote no.
Thank you. Ms. Lilibert LeBeau.
Yes. So the charter members have done an awful lot of work in the last two years to put this together. And I recognize and I respect the work that they've done. Ultimately, you have to either approve everything that's before us or say no to everything. You cannot pick and choose the items that you like and you don't like. For me, the one thing that sticks out is that they are making it more prohibitive for people to get on the ballot. We're going to need additional signatures to be in, to be on the ballot as any school committee, city councillor, mayor. And I feel like this, this election, our city council, we didn't even have a preliminary. We only have 17 candidates and I believe one write-in. We didn't even hit for a preliminary election. That's an issue for me. I think we should be encouraging more people and not making it harder. The other issue I have is what Mr. Dupere said, we, this situation has come up. We have a firefighter who is, is running for school committee. I don't see where they could possibly be an ethics issue there or a conflict issue. I could see if you were running for city council, but not necessarily running for school committee. For those reasons and a few others, unfortunately, even after the work that's been done, I have to vote no on the charter because it's either all yes or all no. And the noes outweigh the yeses for me on this one.
Thank you. Mr. Ponti.
Thank you. And as many of you who are watching at home received in your mail probably less than a week ago, you received a package probably about this thick, which is pages and pages and pages of information pertaining to your charter. I haven't yet formulated my decision as to whether or not I'm going to support or not support the charter. What I can say is there are pros and cons about this proposed charter if it does pass. So there are pros, in my opinion, that I think they do a better job with balancing power between the mayor and the city council. I think there's a better balance there. I think there's some reporting that needs to be brought back to the city council within dates versus just on resolutions and ordinances that have been passed before. There are also some negative responses that I've received from the community as well, much as my colleague indicated, making it a little bit more challenging for people to get on the ballot. We want to be in a situation here in Fall River where we encourage participation, we encourage youth to be a part of city government. So there are pros and cons about the city charter, I strongly believe, but I haven't fully been able to vet that. Speaking on the health insurance aspect as well, I'm an independent contractor myself and I haven't taken health insurance these last two years. I declined and continue to pay out of pocket to give that another cost savings to the citizens of Fall River. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sylvia.
Donna, you specifically mentioned the health insurance to city councillors, correct? In your original question? That's part of it, yeah. I, I haven't read the entire charter, I don't believe. I know a lot of it is dated. I have read, I have read a lot of it, I haven't read the whole thing. I can't imagine, I know it hasn't been changed in 83 years, I can't imagine there's something in the charter that specifically like instills, you know, health insurance benefits upon city councillors. I, it wouldn't, it wouldn't shock me. I, it would just baffle, you know, I, I don't know how that would be included. One thing I want to do as a city councillor is eliminate any compensation, so forget health insurance. And I don't think that's going to require a change of the city charter. I know it's obviously not included as it is proposed now. But, so I don't think, I think you can take that action as the city can vote and approve budgets. I know they just voted to eliminate Linda Pereira's compensation, right? Because she was already, already retired. So they already are stopping people from taking money. As far as why I'm voting no for the, for the charter change, it was, it was sold to the city of Fall River as, oh, it's going to be one or two changes and, you know, some updating back to it being 100 years since they changed it. And it was a complete change. I'm not going to get into the different changes like people said, signatures, whatnot. It just was a bait and switch against the people of Fall River saying, hey, we're only going to change one or two things, then the entire thing was thrown out. So wherever that happened, the people in charge overstepped their bounds. I'll be voting no.
Thank you. Mr. Tibbetto.
He absolutely said it all right there. I don't know how they want us to vote for this. The changes that they made are really not no big deal. And those that, when this was originally voiced that we wanted to do this, wasn't one of the main things in the mayor's turn? And I don't care who the mayor is, but in two years, first year you're doing business, second year you're running. Next, and then you get re-elected for two years, you're doing business the first year, running the second year. Doesn't make sense. Like, why couldn't they approve that? And a subcommittee approved it for four years, but the big, the main committee said no. Which, again, I don't understand, I didn't understand their reasoning. And the cons, to me, outweigh the pros. I mean, I will definitely vote no on this. And insurance, another thing, I would never vote that out. I do not need it. I have my own insurance also. Well, it's with the city. I already have insurance with the city. So I would not, but if someone needs it and it's a part of the city council's compensation, why refuse it to them? You know? That's what I, I.
Thank you. Mr. Tompkins.
Hi. So I think that I'm going to vote no on the charter. I looked at it a lot. I think that what it tries to do, it tries to make a lot of good changes and puts them on a worse foundation. So the good changes don't matter. Essentially, it's giving more power to the city council while doing nothing to address the fact that we're still going to attract weak candidates to the council. It's still going to be a part-time council, but they're going to have more strength. We're going to pay them less, but they're going to have more strength. It, well, pay them less effectively by removing the health insurance benefit. I, I don't need health insurance, but I'd like to attract people that, you know, might need health. I'd like to change the charter dramatically. I think we need to have the city council be a full-time position. I think that we need to restructure our electoral system because it's a fairly bad system where some voters have more power than other voters. There's a lot of reasons why I think we need to have drastic changes to the charter, but these are not the good changes that we need to see. Additionally, one of the things that the new charter does is it, it has some ambiguous legal language so that citizens' direct power when bringing forth the citizens' initiative is limited. They can't just word it however they want and then have the legal system kind of redirect it in their favor. They have to make sure that it's all set ahead of time and that puts an extra hold on citizens forming action in the city. And I think there's a lot of bad things about this new charter. But there's some good things, but it just, altogether, it's not a good charter.
Thank you. Mr. Viveras.
Sure. So we received a mail with pros and cons listed. And I kind of, confused me a little bit. It was an approach that just didn't seem right. What I feel as a pro, someone else might feel is a, is a con. What they feel as a pro, I might feel as a con. And I don't necessarily believe that more signatures is a bad thing. I mean, if someone is a candidate that's seriously seeking office, the more people you meet and the more signatures you get, that's only going to benefit you. I also, I also like in the charter that the mention of the capital plans. And there's, there's some, I think this planning, the financial planning and the capital planning, I think it puts some accountability on people in government and sets a city up for what I believe is success. I think that there's some misleading information out there now being, being spread out. And my advice to people is to take a look at the charter. It's really not a difficult read. If there's an area of concern, it's pretty easy to find in the charter. And get those answers yourself and make an educated vote on November 7th.
Thank you. Mr. Cowan.
I'm going to vote no on the charter. And another thing, we talk about money, but they hired an outside firm for $40,000 to do this charter when, instead of looking for someone that, local from Fall River, and went through it, and then they changed the signatures. Now, they were supposed to go over how many years the mayor was supposed to go, they kept that all the same. And I'm, I'm going to vote no on the charter. And I was just disappointed how they went out on an outside firm and gave them $40,000 when the city's struggling and they're going to raise our taxes, but they came up with $40,000 for this charter. And it ain't, and now we're voting on it to keep it or get rid of it. I'm disappointed that they spent money that we don't even have, that they could have spent it somewhere else.
Thank you. Michael Holzman will have our next question. And it will be directed first to Cliff Ponti.
As a city councillor, what do you believe should have been done differently on the council's part so that a proposed road behind the Cloverleaf Mills across the Quikasham Bike Trail would have received better review and maybe not have received unanimous council approval? And also, do you think what happened was more a function of the council making hurried decisions at the end of late meetings that the road and lack of, or that the road and the lack of explanation was an inside deal cut by the mayor or something else?
Mr. Ponti.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, first off, I will say this, that should we have asked more questions as a, as a, as a council? I think we should, we could have. Yes, we could have. But playing Monday morning quarterback, looking back at the agenda and looking back at what an actual easement is, it's a pass and repass. And if you look at any kind of easement in any way, shape, or form ever recorded at the Registry of Deeds, you'll see that a passive repass could mean anything. And usually, the city council is put in a situation where we have to say yes or no on sewer and water easements. It was my understanding, looking at the map in our package as I prepare myself before every single city council meeting, I look very closely at it and I can tell you that it really was a water and sewer easement. Now, the politics being involved with the, with the trail, I think it would have been a little bit better, where we could look at this as a better opportunity, is have better communication. If we were communicated as a council in its, in its whole body, in terms of exactly what we were seeing and what was going to come of this, I think this conversation really wouldn't be had right now. There wouldn't be individuals who are coming before the city council extremely upset and not happy with the progress of it. But I'm hoping the mayor can keep his word that a road is not going to happen. If you don't want it, it's not going to happen. And as a councillor, I will continue to hold him accountable for it.
Thank you. Mr. Sylvia.
Couple of things there. Was it a hurried process? Certainly it was. If there was no, from what I understand, there was no question, there wasn't that there wasn't enough questions, there was no questioning of it. Everybody sees at the end of the meetings, they get in hours and hours of whatever they really want to talk about. And then it's like, then they just take care of the other issues at the end, they kind of shoot right through them, housekeeping. As far as what Mr. Ponti just said, easements, any easement ever recorded at the Registry of Deeds could mean anything. Well, that's certainly not true. I'm involved right now with the disputes with easements. I'm involved right now with the disputes with easements, and they absolutely should be, you know, completely outlined and clear and not vague so that people know what they can and can't do. There's the subject of lawsuits all the time. So to say that, you know, it could mean anything, and Monday morning quarterbacking, it's not that. It was your own, it was the council's own behavior, it was the mayor's behavior. It was something, how it unfolded was, it was something that nobody had a problem with initially until, because they didn't know, I believe the mayor knew what was going on. The city council probably didn't know what was going on, just for a lack of questioning certain things in the agenda. But then, once people found out what was happening, and if you're watching at home, you wouldn't really know either, it was just, oh, easement. They just shoot through things all the time for the sake of time. But people got upset, and then comes the Monday morning quarterbacking from the politicians saying, oh, no, that's not what we meant. So they botched it from the beginning, and I think they just have to own it. And they should take more time considering things like that.
Thank you. Mr. Tibbetto.
I don't care what the vote was, they should take more time. And you can't just say, hey, you know, they had a bad night, they were slow and they just voted through. No excuse, none whatsoever. They should have read the thing properly and should have been explained to them now too. And now everybody's like up in arms, everybody, the other night I was at the meeting, and they're accusing the mayor of taking contributions from that company. And one of the city councilors too. And they're attacking everybody and anybody to make their case, instead of just saying, look, this was wrong, let's just get rid of it. We should never have started this foolishness. We should never have gave this up, and we should be thinking of the trail, not how those people are going to get their trucks in and out. They already have a way. They don't like it. They want a better way, so they can go right on the highway. Well, whoopie do. Not if it interferes with the trail.
Thank you. Mr. Tompkins.
All right, so this is a pretty easy question. I mean, the council clearly didn't fully read this document. All nine of them approved it unanimously without looking it over thoroughly. If it was extremely ambiguous and they approved an extremely ambiguous thing, that's clearly fault of the council. On the other hand, clearly the mayor intentionally made this ambiguous, as this was from a campaign contributor. So is it their fault for being fooled by the mayor or the mayor's fault for fooling them? I don't know. Either way, we need people on the council that are going to read through the documents and thoroughly scrutinize them before approving easements for a road across a state-granted park that we just built to totally ruin it. It's a disaster.
Thank you. Mr. Viveras.
So one of the questions earlier tonight was on the role of the city council, and some of us talked about preparation. And I don't know what kind of preparation went in, maybe there was a lot of preparation, you know, I don't know. But the right questions, the right questions were asked, maybe we could have gotten to an answer that would have allowed them to know that there was a road being, planning on going over there. At the end of the day, I mean, I hope that there's no road going in on that bike path. One of the only areas in the city where we see trail and nature and it's safe and maintained for residents. So there's blame to be shared, I think, on both sides. You would hope that the communication would have been better coming down from administration to the city council.
Thank you. Mr. Cowan.
Yes. They're saying, we have lawyers that work for the city. When you buy a property or whatever, you have a title search or whatever. So you really can't blame, we don't know what was in their packet, the city council's packet. If I buy a property, the title, it'll say easement or whatever. You have a lawyer. We have lawyers on staff that the city's paying for. So everybody's trying to say, oh, they voted for it. We don't know what was in the packet. Has anyone seen the packet that the city council has received? Did on their deed, did it say a right-of-way? I know I have properties now, it has a right-of-way, but I had a good lawyer at the closing and he wrote everything on it. So when we had the closing, he says to me, David, make sure you put this in things so they don't come. That's for a sewer line. Because if you don't put that, they'll drive their truck, they'll dig up your property. That's why you have a lawyer. We have lawyers working for the city of Fall River. Why weren't they notified, the city council, and say, hey, we're giving you as a head-up, you've worked for the city council and you work for the taxpayers? Where was Massachusetts? Didn't they give the money for the bike path? And the engineers and everybody that came down? Nobody else noticed that? So now they're putting all the blame on the city council.
Thank you. Mr. Dupere.
Well, when you say the word easement, you think of utilities. I mean, that's the first thing that comes to my mind. And in the defense of the council, that's probably what they all thought. It was for water lines, sewer lines, electric lines, telephone poles, whatever it may be. And now, you really don't know, like the other people said, what was in the packet. I've heard different stories. I heard from one councillor that there was no map in the packet. So, you know, and maybe different people have different packets. But I think it's a transparency thing, I think it's a communication issue, definitely, between the administration and the council. And I just, I just think that, you know, going forward on situations like that, they should probably just kick it to planning or something like that, and just delay the process a little bit more to really get all the information and don't make a hasty decision at the end of a council meeting that lasted for five or six or seven hours, and everybody is so tired, and just say, you know what, let's just throw this down to planning or environmental, whatever it may be. Because it really would be a shame if there's a road where the kids can, you know, cross, the kids can ride their bike, you know?
Thank you. Mr. Libby in the boat.
So, a couple of things. One, was it a late decision? It was. But the timing of the decision should have no effect on how people are voting. We were there until 12:30 last night. We still vote on everything and do our research on everything, just as we do the first item on the agenda. Secondly, not only was there not a mention of a road, there was a mention of an easement, specific, water and sewer easement. There was no mention of a road, and there was also no mention, and people are forgetting this, they're not just putting a road in, they are putting a road in on the current bike path and moving the bike path over. That's what people aren't saying. They're putting the road on the current bike path. It didn't say anything, not only about a road, but that we are now going to take the current bike path, give these people, private people, a road, and now pay money that the state just gave us a gift, and build the bike path. Where is that money coming from? And it will also tell you, there was no map in the packet, like was mentioned, and in the prior paperwork, if you go back, which I did, I asked the city clerk and the judge for the prior paperwork, going back to when this all started, there was a map, and there was also the word road in the easements in the paperwork. That was left out when it was sent to us. Should everybody take blame? Sure. But if you want the council to now ask a bunch of hypothetical questions every time something comes in front of us, we are never, ever going home. Are we now going to guess what might, what they might not be telling us? That's crazy.
Thank you. Our next question will come from Pam Martin from Fall River Government Television, and it will be answered first by Mark Tibbetto. Pam.
Okay, so several people I talked with this week have urged that we all discuss the drug problem. I think we knew a question like that was coming. So some residents in the North End are fighting Star's plans for a treatment center at the site of a former mill. There's really only two ways we can stand on this issue. Do we need more beds in Fall River to save lives? Or do we say that we've had enough of treating so-called outsiders and perhaps ask another community to pick up this so-called burden of treating people?
How can you expect another community to pick up your people? You know, what was happening in Fall River? You just can't push it off to Somerset or Versed or Tomp, whatever. As far as having the second center, if you haven't been to the first one, you'll know how crowded it is, you know how much work they do. I haven't been quite a few times, just for inspections. I don't see no problem with having a second one. Why is that going to hurt the neighborhood? I don't get it. It's going to be in a mill across the street from any houses. You know, there's none on that site itself or that block, it's across the street. People are going to go in there, they're going to sleep at night? We can't just keep turning our back on people. We just can't keep doing that, saying, here, check it off somewhere else, or tell the feds to take care of it, or tell the state to come down here, you know? We have to take care of our own. And it's sad, but, you know, our children, my age, my grandchildren could be in trouble, you know? And I want a place for them. I want them to be able to get help. I don't want to just push it off and say, see you later, goodbye. No, I hope it's built.
Thank you. Mr. Tompkins.
How about we make Newton or Wellesley take the Star Building? I think a wealthier community would be much more capable of handling this problem. We have a lot of people coming into our rehab centers from out of the community, and we don't have the money in Fall River to take care of all these people. We don't have the money in Fall River to pay for the CSO that we're going to need to pay for. There's a lot of things in Fall River we don't have the money to pay for, and we can't just have things come into Fall River that need our money. They can go to a wealthier city that has much better resources, that can actually get these people real rehab, which they won't be able to get in Fall River because we don't have money to spend on that. There's, I mean, if they're going to build in Fall River, there's nothing we can, and there's nothing we can do about it, then there's nothing we can do about it, and we have to deal with that. But I would much rather pressure them, or pressure other communities, wealthier communities that actually have the resources to take care of and fully rehab the drug problem, than Fall River. That's my position on this.
Thank you. Mr. Viveras.
Yeah, so obviously, this is a, the opioid epidemic is crushing communities across the country, and it's hitting Fall River particularly hard. Last year, we were third highest in the state in opioid-related deaths. So, I mean, that tells me that Fall River has a responsibility to provide resources and continue to look for ways to continue to provide additional resources to individuals who are suffering through addiction and their families, whatever those services are. We need to be able to offer them opportunities to come out of this and live productive and successful lives. So I think whatever we can do as a city to provide those resources, I think we have to entertain those and certainly give it a worthwhile discussion.
Thank you. Mr. Cowan.
Yes, I think we need another one. Because I went the other day to the hospital and they had them all through the hospital. It's bad out there. You can't, what if it was your son or daughter? It destroys families. We got to look for grants or something and bring people in to work with the families because it destroys, if you have, say, a son or a daughter, and you're fighting with your husband or wife or whatever, we got to work as a community. Your people don't realize, everywhere you look, they're on the corner. And it's getting bad out there. You can't just close your eyes to it. Everybody wants to say, oh, kick them out of here. You can't, they're human beings. That's like saying, if it was your son or daughter, you wouldn't want to close your eyes to it. You know, once you see it out there, the officers tell you, oh, we take, we come, we got that person two, three times a thing, it's bad. You have to go after the dealers, where they're getting the products. We need more officers to go after the drug dealers. And we have to have support for these, for the people using. You can't close your eyes on it. It's there in black and white. You got to, you see it right in front of you. You have to work with the people.
Thank you. Mr. Dupere.
Yeah, the opioid epidemic is definitely a terrible thing. It doesn't discriminate, it affects people from all walks of life, it affects their families, their loved ones. And I know people that have suffered from, I know people that have died from it. And I have, I've reached out to the deputy director of EMS, and I spoke with her. And it's, the city has the programs, and again, it's information people need to know about these programs that the city has. And they need to take advantage of them. One of the situations is, is that I don't think we actually need more beds, because I've been told that there are beds available. They may not be in the city. There are beds available in Springfield, and it's really not a bad thing that if somebody that is in Fall River that's addicted, to get them out of the surroundings that they're familiar with and send them out to Springfield. Have them rehab out there. And then when they come back, then they can meet with deputy director, and she can put them in the groups, the reach-out groups, and put it to good use for them, and to keep them clean and straight. I definitely think that we should continue to fund the police department's task force to get these opiates off the streets.
Thank you. Ms. Libby in the boat.
So, as for a second Star facility, the issue I have with it is that these facilities are not just for Fall River residents. If they were for Fall River residents only, you know, build as many beds as we need, let's take care of our own. These are statewide, so if you go to Star and you want to get treatment, you might be sent to anywhere in the state, just as anybody in the state, if there's a bed open here, that's where they're coming. So it's not just for Fall River residents. The other issue I have is that other communities are not stepping up. They are leaving communities like ours, cities like ours, to take on all of the responsibility, and I don't really think that that's fair. What's happening now is, this is now the direction our city is heading in, or is already at. Main Street, North Main Street, with stepping stones in all the different buildings, is known as Recovery Row. You can, you know, there are all different programs, there are places that people live, it's completely set up. Our city is set up as a service city. And we already have an incredible number of nonprofits. The nonprofits don't pay taxes, they don't have to, we can ask them to do not a pilot. What we know from doing the budget is not many of them do, and they're not, they don't have to. So, you know, I'm still a little bit on the fence on this one. Will Fall River do its share? Yes. Have we done our share? We absolutely have, but other communities really do need to step up.
Thank you. Mr. Ponti.
From January to July of this year, 440 drug overdoses were reported in Fall River. Thirty-one of those drug overdoses were fatal. That's a problem. It's a problem at a national level, and it's a problem at the local level. What can we do as city councilors at the national, at the local level? I personally think what we need to do as councilors is strongly advocate to continue to fund our police and our police department's gangs, vice and special operations unit, number one. Number two, I really think we need to start developing a curriculum today in our school department and work with our school committee to establish a curriculum on the do's and the don'ts of drugs. The curriculum needs to be in place at the elementary level, the middle school level, and the high school level. I think that will have an impact as we continue to grow, and as we continue to grow as a city. And we also need to work on helping those who are in need. As other people have indicated here tonight, we have a number of nonprofits that do a tremendous amount of work in our city and help us. But we need to stand behind these people who need help and do what we can, and like I mentioned, support those organizations that do support the city. Let's be real, there's no quick fix here, but as city councilors, we can continue to advocate for funding for these programs and for our police department, drug and vice unit and special operations unit, so they can have the resources to fight these issues.
Thank you. Mr. Sylvia.
So you can quote statistics and heartfelt testimonials about how much you care about opioid abuse. I ask everyone to go back in the last two years, last 20 years, that you've seen at city council meetings where they're actually discussing this issue, they're actually trying to get policies to do anything to improve it. The, to a person, you heard all the candidates and incumbents say, you know, we need more police. I, first off, there, I'm unaware of, except Mr. Tibbetto, he's got a career in firefighting. People, any person who has actually dealt with drugs, crime, any of these things. So you have, you have two people here on the public safety committee who are not speaking from experience. So, A, they have to defer to the police. The police are obviously biased, they're going to say, yeah, if we just had, Dan Racine told Ray Mitchell, if I just had a couple more million dollars, I'll make Fall River like it's 1950s again. That is not true, that's not going to happen. If we were to double the police in Fall River, what are they going to do when they catch people? Throw them off a cliff into the abyss? That's not what happens. Those people stay here, they go in and out of jail. Nothing right now that the city of Fall River is doing is geared towards solving the opioid problem. Everybody says it's the biggest issue in Fall River, nobody does anything about it. I guarantee, if I'm elected to the city council, I'm going to put the opioid issue on the agenda for the city council every meeting. agenda for the city council every meeting. So we'll talk about it every two weeks, and they'll get sick of hearing about it because they'll want to talk about whatever they pass or not.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to try to fit in one more round of questions, but within our time allotted, what I'd like to do for candidates is to give you one minute to answer this final question, then we'll have our 90-second closing statements. So our final question will be asked by Donna Mata, and it will be answered first by Jordan Sylvia. Donna.
Jordan, the current administration has made it clear that they want to run a city-operated economic development office, and that FroED is out of the picture in terms of what they've been doing for 30, 40 years. What's your position on that? And if you agree with the mayor, how would you support him? And if not, how would you not support him?
Sure. Even piggybacking off that last question about what, you know, do you, do you support a drug rehab? I don't think that's the city's role, the council's role, to pick and choose which businesses and organizations should, you know, be able to exist. FroED, they, you know, they're kind of the pseudo-public-private type situation. I don't personally think the people who are involved in FroED, you see the arguments between Ken Fiola and Jay Zil. It's clearly personal, and it's been played out all over the city of Fall River. I personally think that the city should handle its own economic development. So, because, and it should only be like, there shouldn't be this big concerted effort by the city. We should just work with private entities who want to come here. There should be tax incentives. Only thing the government should do is make it easier for businesses to come here, cut people's taxes. They shouldn't be trying to set deals together where, of course, their friends always make out coincidentally. That's the problem I have with FroED. I'd like to see it, I'd like to see it done away with, personally.
Thank you. Mr. Thibotat.
I kind of agree with him on that. City, see, you have to go out. FroED had to go out and get people interested in business here. They're not just going to come knocking at your door all the time. That was part of their job to go out, and I think it belongs with the city also. But they need people to go out and solicit businesses to come here. It's not just going to happen like that. Should it all be at city hall? Oh, government center, I'm sorry. Yes, I think it should be. I think FroED or the board that he works for, nothing against Kenny, believe me, Kenny's a friend. They should continue to be a board supporting the city and giving us ideas and helping us bring things to the city. But I don't think, I don't think we're going to, we're not going to lose a lot by, by not going out and getting our own business.
Thank you. Mr. Tompkins.
I don't see why FroED can't be transferred into a public entity that operates on behalf of the city. It would, it would increase the transparency that we would have in the Fall River Office of Economic Development if it were a public entity instead of a nonprofit-private entity. So I'd like to see it be transferred into some form of public entity. I'd like to see it be able to do much better outreach in the future to get more people interested in doing business in Fall River. We do need more businesses to come into Fall River. And I'd like to see it attracting different types of businesses. I'd like to attract businesses that are interested in employee development and working with public-private partnerships to educate their employees because we have a very, a relatively undereducated community in Fall River. And I feel like any means that we have to increase the education level and the average wage level in Fall River at our disposal, I think we should take advantage of that.
Thank you. Mr. Viveras.
So we've, we've seen some strides in our economic development, industrial park, the location where Amazon, waterfront, the pier. And my belief that a lot of this has happened over, obviously, over different administrations. And so I, my belief, my personal belief is that there needs, there should be some consistency with our economic development. Now, I don't believe it's the council's job to appoint that person or that organization. That can be left to the redevelopment authority. But my position, my stance on that is that we should see some consistency, and it shouldn't be a mere appointed position. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cowan.
I don't think we need it. We have the salaries, I'm hearing $200 and some thousand salary. Why don't they take the $200 and some thousand salary and put it back into the pot? Because the taxpayers are paying, and yet, when you hear, oh, we're going to raise the taxes again, two and a half percent, and we're going to get rid of purple bags. I think we work with the Chamber of Commerce, and they, they go out, have a communication, like building bridges, like I said at the beginning. Everybody works as a team. We all live in Fall River. They want to make the city, because everybody, when I had a business, I went to the Chamber of Commerce. They can, they'll know what we have to offer. We have water. Look at Blunt, they're making all kinds of soup. They have the water. Gold Medal. We have the resources.
Thank you. Mr. Dupere.
I think the biggest problem with the argument with, you know, FroED and the mayor is definitely money-related. You know, there's the grants that go, that go to FroED, and then there's, of course, again, the salaries. But I think that it wouldn't be a bad thing to have the city administration a little more involved with the development. I know a lot of stuff, you know, they just not informed about. And there is also the other issue as far as things that, you know, the IRA had, I had FroED to do, which certain structures in the city that were, fell into disrepair. And then, you know, it's what it costs to run those facilities, and just the numbers didn't seem to match up. So I think it would be, probably be a good thing to have the city more involved with the economic development office.
Thank you. Mr. Libby Laboe.
Yes, so my position on this hasn't changed since the beginning. I don't think that this would be something that comes in under an administration. Take this mayor, this administration out of the equation, take FroED as an entity, take Ken Fiola out of the equation, whoever the mayor is, whoever the economic development group is, we need consistency. We've had Amazon, South Coast Marketplace, waterfront, lots of small businesses that have come in, and the, meanwhile, the administration has changed. So I don't want to see, every time we change a mayor, which happens to be a lot lately, the focus shifts. You know, say, this mayor wants mills, this mayor wants waterfront, this mayor wants something else. Is the economic person, or one person, from all that we've heard, are they going to switch? Are they going to be hired, a new person, every time we come in? Where, there's not going to be any consistency. So I do not think it belongs under this administration. I do not think it belongs under any administration.
Thank you. Mr. Ponti.
You know what's too bad here is politics got involved in economic development. And if we, as city council candidates, continue to advocate for strengthening economic development, we need to make sure that whatever entity deals with economic development has the support to do so. It's pretty clear that if you want to abolish an office of economic development who has found some success in the last couple of years, and I've had my concerns with that department, but we have to see what the proof is in the pudding. We have South Coast Marketplace, we have Amazon, we have the state pier. We have seen growth in economic development. If we want to talk about abolishing economic, FroED, we need to have a coherent plan to address it. Right now, nobody can tell us or tell me who's dealing with the small businesses who are getting small business loans or need, need support. Nobody can, nobody can tell me who's working with developers to work on something like the King Philip Mill. We need a plan for it, and it's important that we have that.
Thank you. Time now for our 90-second closing statements, and we will start our closing statements with Mr. David Cowan.
I'm, I'm sick of the taxes keep on going through the roof. We're going to raise them again two and a half. Now they're talking about taking off the purple bags. We got a high school that we have no funding for. They said they're making with the purple bags $2.4 million. When, before they had the purple bags, when I'd be going to work at 4:30 in the morning, I'd see people from Westport, Somerset, Tiverton putting their trash in people's barrels. We're paying for that. Now, when I'm driving by through the city, nobody's putting trash in. But we have, half of the citizens in Fall River are using different bags, and nobody's enforcing it. You have a lot of taxpayers paying for the purple bags. Somebody should be enforcing that. If they're putting black bags or whatever, white bags, nobody should be picking up that trash. We need the funds. Everybody says, oh, we're going to get rid of the purple bags. We need, we need safety. I'd rather see officers walking the streets. So, like, years ago, when you used to walk the, when we had officers walking through the streets, you, people knew the officers. The neighbors would come out. They knew one-on-one. Now, you don't even know the officer. He goes down the street, and a lot of senior citizens are calling up, oh, they're selling drugs out the thing. They come an hour later. But if they have an officer walking different neighborhoods, we're hiring more officers. Let them learn to crawl before they walk.
Thank you. Daniel Dupere.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a 49-year-old lifelong resident in the city of Fall River. I've been married for a little, just about 31, 31 years. My whole family gives back to the community. My wife is a preschool teacher. My oldest, she's 30 years old, she's a nurse. My middle child's 28, he's a police officer in the city. My youngest one is 26, he is a high school teacher in the city. And I just, I just feel that, you know, it's time for me to give back. I mean, I'm a, I'm a Union Diesel mechanic. Again, my kids are all grown up, and it's, it's definitely time for me to give back to the community. And I would love nothing more than to sit on the council and, you know, to serve the public, and let me work for the public. Definitely, I think public safety is the utmost importance to me, and I think it's just the hinge pin of everything to get rid of the crime, get rid of the guns and the opiates, and we can work from there. Because people that want to come in and develop, they're not going to want to do it if they're afraid to come into the city to do that. They're not going to want to move here and, and, you know, live here if they're afraid. So that's, that's basically the most important thing is, is public safety in my heart.
Thank you. Pam Libby Laboe.
So thank you for having us. I have to say that 90 seconds isn't a lot of time to answer questions on economic development, opioids, the charter. So I always ask people, residents in the city, if you have a question, if you have a concern, if you have a complaint, feel free to call me. I tend to get lots and lots of phone calls, and that's actually what I like most about this job, is the ability to be able to help residents with whatever it is that is concerning them. When I campaigned two years ago, I campaigned on the basics for the city because we don't have them, clean, safe neighborhoods. I live in the South End, I'm raising three kids, this is where we live, this is where we're staying. And I think there's still work to do there, and I would like to continue that. I don't expect the people that watch the meetings or the residents who read about it in the paper to agree with every vote that I take. That would not be realistic. But I hope that people find that we have a common, the common basic values, that we want the same things for the city. And for me, it's for our city to be safe, and it's for our city to be clean, and for our city to grow. I would appreciate a vote on November 7th so that I continue, can continue to advocate for those things. Thank you.
Thank you. Cliff Ponti.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Fall River Community Media, everybody who's here tonight, those people who are watching at home. Thank you for being engaged in city government. Thank you for caring about the direction your city's going. Two years ago, I sat here asking for you to give me an opportunity to serve as your city councillor. I want to tell you, it's been an absolute honor and privilege for me to serve as your city councillor over the last two years. Over the next two years, we need to make essential services like public safety and education our first priority. Your tax dollars must be spent first on essential services. With your support on November 7th, I will continue to be your voice as we move toward our future. A future that will be determined by the decisions we make as citizens and as elected representatives. When we do vote, we should recall the words of President John F. Kennedy when he says, "Let us not seek to fix the blame for the past, let us accept our responsibility for our future." By voting, you accept your responsibility. I accept my responsibility to you, to be your voice, to be your advocate, and to be your city councillor. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to represent you. It has been one of the most humbling experiences of my life, and a promise that you can take to the bank. I promise to continue to represent you and give you and your family nothing but my very best. Thank you.
Thank you. Jordan Sylvia.
Sure. So I'm going to start off with, I've been, this is the second debate I did, I've done the mayoral debate, so you've probably three hours now. I wasn't asked one question on education. It's a function of what people think the city council is responsible for. I know I was just recently speaking with another candidate about this. A lot of people, there's, there's a lot of narratives that go out there around Fall River. One of them is that we drastically underfund education. So Fall River pays $14,633.99 per student, right? Then we have Swansea, Somerset, Taunton, Westport, Dartmouth, Fairhaven, New Bedford, Berkeley, Acushna, Attleboro, Middleborough, Rochester, pretty much every other community in this area spends less per student. So Fall River is not drastically underfunding education, that's just a complete lie. Those are the Desi's numbers. One thing, the reason why I'm running right now, I got involved in the recall several years ago, looking, you know, grandiose ideas, we're going to get this guy out of office and put in new people and take the city in a different direction. That hasn't changed. There's been elections, and then you've seen another mayor, and then another mayor, and then different configurations of the city council. The trajectory of Fall River has not changed one bit, whether it's socioeconomics, public safety. So I am coming at these things all with radical, actual changes. I'm not treating symptoms, I'm treating the problem where every person that I've seen, I've read all their, their positions, in 30 years will go by, nothing will change in Fall River. That's why I'm asking for people to trust in me, give me a chance, listen, hear me out. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Thibotat.
You know, years ago, I went, when I retired, I went to Arizona because my wife had a friend out there who was selling real estate. So I went with her, of course. I retired and went with her. And you know what? After so many years of it, I even went into real estate myself, didn't like it. After so many years of it, we decided to come back to Fall River, mostly because of me. Fall River, this is my home. I went to high school here, I went to grammar school, I did everything in Fall River. I went to college in Fall River, believe it or not. I won't tell you, it's Bradford-Durphy School of Technology, that would really age me, but I started out there when it was down here on Durphy Street. So, you know, Fall River's always been to me the best. And, you know, anything I've given, any committees I've served on, United Way, Clothe Child, whatever, has always been Fall River. So I came back because I felt I still had something to give. And that's what I'm doing in this race, you know? I'm not trying to change the whole world here, I'm just trying to change a few things, maybe stop arguments, you know, on the council, maybe cut the minis a little shorter. That doesn't sound like anything big, but I think when people listen to it, it is. And drugs, again, you've got to give the police the tools, otherwise it's not going to happen. Give them the tools to stop this. But you've got to get, that costs money. Be prepared to spend money and raise taxes.
Thank you. Ian Tompkins.
So I'm Ian Tompkins, and I really want to try to improve the educational system in Fall River. I think, as Jordan pointed out, we haven't been asked a question on education, and I think that's probably the biggest problem in Fall River. I do think it's a little bit underfunded, and I think that we need to reach out to the state and federal entities and get better funding in Fall River. And I also think that we need to drastically restructure our education. We still have an education system that's built for the late 1800s, early 1900s, and we need to start working on bringing innovation into Fall River and seeing how we can, we can better educate our population and get them ready for the next century. So that's, that's the basis of my plan. I also really want to work on, again, bringing in a more inclusive economy and bringing in employers that are going to work on, with employee development, employee education, as I think that's a big part of what Fall River needs to raise its average wage and its average education level. Additionally, I take a different approach to public safety. As some of our other members here tonight were talking about, I want to see more police where you go out and you know you're a police officer. I want to see police outreach to the community so that the police are meeting and greeting residents, so that they can feel comfortable calling up a police officer like they're a good friend, and just telling them what's going on in the neighborhood, rather than feeling intimidated to reach out and say what they see going on. Beyond that, I really want to see improved government transparency. That's one of the reasons I'd like to see FROWED transferred into a public entity, and I want to see more public documentation of what's going on in City Hall and the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Derek Viveras.
I'd like to thank FRC Media and Bristol Community College for hosting this forum and giving us the opportunity, and thank you to everybody who's interested in watching at home. I'm a new city council candidate, and I'm running simply because I care, I care about what's going on in the city today, I care about what we're doing today for the future of the city. I was born and raised here, I met my wife here, we've invested in properties here, and now, like many people, we have our children's futures invested in this city. And I understand the potential that Fall River has, and I believe that I have the leadership experience to help the city, working with the council and the administration, to reach that potential. I will take a selfless approach in my role and always act in the best interests of the residents and the businesses of the city. So I respectfully, respectfully ask that you consider casting a vote for Derek Viveras on November 7th. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I want to thank the candidates and panelists for participating in tonight's forum. If you're watching live, please join us at 8:00 PM, as we will have our second city council forum panel at that time. Special thanks to our FRC media staff working tonight, Stephen Rice, Lucy Cabral, Denise Pumagwaye, and Sean Elliott, who is representing Bristol Community College and the Jackson Arts Center. You can watch a replay of this forum and find out more about all the candidates running in this year's election by tuning into FRC TV Channel 95 or our websites, frmedia.org and FRCMediaNews.org. Also make a point to join us on election night, November 7th, as we'll be working with our colleagues at FRG TV to bring you complete coverage of the results on election night. I'm Keith Thibault. Have a good night.